Seven o'clock, we will call a Winona County Planning Commission meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge alleges to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, by its God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Oops. Don't want to take it off on me. This must be the objection seat.
No, I got that one.
Okay. Approval of the agenda is the next item of business. Does anyone have any discussion? Or someone want to make a motion?
I'll second it then.
Kelly moves to approve the agenda and Mark seconds it. Is there any discussion on this proposal? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Okay, did everyone get a chance to read over the minutes? Does anyone have any comments or clarifications or anything else?
That move's approved.
Steve moves to approve the minutes as written. Ali will second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes are approved as presented. Then we go on to petitions. Docket number PC-101818-01. To consider the petition of Rick Larson with Representatives Francis and Jessica Danielson of 27814 Tower Road, Dakota, Minnesota, in regards to the following conditional use permit request. Allow for a policeman of the dwelling to be located within the Agricultural Resource Conservation District on less than forty acres. Proposal is for five acres pursuant to Chapter 10.4.6 of the Winona County Zone Ordinance. Who on staff has got this one? Blake, okay, it's your floor.
Mr. Chair, just to start out, I guess, just a little what you got here.
Okay, does the members of the commission have the late?
Yes.
Yeah, I got mine too.
The petitioner did get a copy as well, yes.
Now, is that supposed to be in the record or just for our?
They want it in the record.
Matthew requests that the petitioners read it into the record.
Alright.
But yeah, I guess so they're looking, and they're required to actually get the five acres and three hundred feet of road frontage on this one due to the number of splits in the past. It's at least the third split, looking back through the records, it might actually be more like the fourth or fifth split of the existing parcel. The main parcel is still one hundred and fifty acres, but they're looking to split five acres off along Tower Road there in Pleasant Hill Township. And the proposed location is kind of on the edge of an existing field there. And my video showed that it was beans this year, but they are under... The dwelling is located partially on prime soils, but the proposed five acre parcel that they came up with is actually less than forty percent prime soil, so they won't need a prime soils variance to develop the site. And this kind of shows where, out on that ridge, there's kind of a point there that comes of prime soils, but they're trying to grab some of the woodland as well to avoid the forty percent number. But primarily lies upon type two and type three soils. So it's not the top level of prime soils in the county, but it is, you know, currently being used as agricultural land, which this photo shows. And I think, is this next one the video or is this the...? This is the video, yes. You'll kind of see, so I'm facing to the east here, kind of downhill a little bit, and then the bluffs there, and then there's the road below, so you can start that. Yep, yep. And then I'll spin here to the north, up the road, and you'll see an existing dwelling there that's on, I believe, like eight acres. And then the trees in the distance there is the petitioner's father's property. And then you'll come back and I'll look back towards County Road 12 and Interstate 90, and there's another dwelling down the road just a little bit. We haven't heard any objections from any neighbors on this one. Pleasant Hill Township did show support, we got that. That letter came in as an amendment to your packet, so that wasn't received on the initial mailing. We just got it this week. And yeah, other than now, yesterday, we got that milestone record. So if you get a chance, a milestone letter, you get a chance to read that over. And I gave one to the petitioners as well, so they could read it. But they don't, I guess they didn't have a ton of comments. They're not against the petition or anything, they just wanted it to go on the record that they do have a site there and they actively blast for, I believe it's about eight months a year, so that there might be some noise and different things coming from that that typically isn't associated with this similar setting. Thank you, do you got any questions for me?
Is that a private drive or?
No, so that's a, the purple line kind of shows the private drive ends back there, kind of. I'll walk up to them. Yeah, it's Tower Road, it's a township road uphill here on the bend. And then there's a sixty-five foot setback from the road, but they're well outside of that.
I guess I just had a point of interest question.
Yes.
I think I've been on the road, but I don't know exactly where it is. It comes off of 12?
Comes off of County Road 12 there, yeah. And then the, I think it's County Road nine is the one? Is that the one that cuts down to Pickwick? The road next to it is one that cuts down through Pickwick. Oh, sorry, County Road seven. Yeah, and there, I think you probably got the name Tower Road because there is a cell tower located south of this property as well on the west side of the road.
Okay, thank you. I think I know.
Is there any further questions for Blake?
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we need a motion for a public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Wait, wait, excuse me. Does the petitioners, do they get the floor now or do we wait? Okay, okay, is there somebody here representing the petitioners that would like to explain their agenda or proposal or against? State your name and address and...
My current address or?
Yes.
I'm Jessica Danielson. I live at 55 Fairfax Street here in town. My dad wants to give me five acres, it'd just be easier to help with farming and stuff because almost every day we go up there and we help farm for harvest season for milking cows, day and night too, so it'd just be more convenient for us.
Yeah, and I'm getting younger and my bones are starting to ache too, so. I'm fifty-six and I ain't ready to retire yet. Because I guess a lot of you guys are older than I am up there too, or some of you guys, I should say all of you, but it's been getting harder every year. Got to keep up everything and keep it going. So I got grandson helping, helping me try to do a few of this and putting the crops and stuff in and all the work and the white head. What you have four back there, you have five, you can't do too much. You can only house and that's about it for me. So I do a lot of milking most time myself unless they're helping me.
Are you aware of or have any comments on Milestone Materials letter?
I guess I didn't know nothing about it until I got here.
Okay.
But I know they do blasting and stuff there.
But they've done that for years, right?
Their quarry's been open for ever since I was a young kid, you know. And that shakes back by us on too, you know, when they do it.
But you have no, you understand what's happening and you have no?
No, I don't have no objections. Exjections of what goes on, you know, down there.
Okay.
Is your daughter employed on the farm full-time or?
No, she helps out.
I have another job too.
Yeah, she works at Gunderson. So I don't have no full-time help, there is help when they can. Help with the crop, bringing them in and putting them in, with the dairy side and that, keeping everything, trying to keep everything going. Yep.
You can have it if you want.
I guess that's all I got to say.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, do we have a motion to open the public hearing on docket number 10181801?
Yeah, I'll move.
Chris moves. Richard seconds it. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the public hearing for docket PC-101818-01 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this docket, please step forward, state your name and address and say what you would like to say. For the second time, anyone wishing to speak to docket 01, please step forward, state your name and address, speak your piece. For the third and final time, anyone wishing to speak on docket 101818-01, please step forward, state your name and address.
I move that we close the public hearing.
It has been moved by Don to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Vince, second sit. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of closing the public hearing on docket 01, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Public hearing is now closed. Members of the commission, any comments, questions before we get to the findings of fact?
Well, the question I have is why put it out in the middle of a good field? They couldn't find any other property on their property that was for a house besides that? I mean, to me, it looks like one of the best fields they, or you know, pretty nice field. They can raise soybeans on it to be putting a house on.
Blake, would you care to comment on that?
Yeah, I think part of the reason they moved there is they're either running into where they're going to be on a bluff and that's going to be restricted and they'd have to get a variance to build, which is kind of a higher threshold. And they are, they moved as far as they could to stay on a flatter part to avoid any of the slopes because if they go over a twelve percent slope, then we would require them to get either a professional, a geologist, or a licensed engineer out there to do a soil erosion control plan. So I think they tried to stay up on a flatter portion. And typically in Winona County, if you're less than a twelve percent slope, there's some of those areas that are prime soils. So I think they tried to move as far as they could off of those prime soils. They wanted to, I know they were, when we were talking, they wanted to use up as little bit of the agricultural land as they could while still keeping a good building site without, you know, getting onto steep slopes or, because both areas there, if they moved to the north or the south, the reason that that finger there is prime soils is because there's two drainage ways along that side of the road. So I mean, then you got some of the engineering to try to divert water around the dwelling. So I think that's kind of what led to the choice. Although, you know, agriculturally, it might not be the best spot, I think, for a long-term dwelling. It probably is their best choice that they could find there.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Stephanie, did you not have the findings of fact like you usually have for us? Oh, so you don't have?
They went out extra early, they weren't sitting there waiting for a big time, they went out with their activity.
Page nineteen. They're in that book too? Okay, well, I was getting spoiled with the other way. There we are, okay. Are we ready for the, going through the findings of fact then? Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments about any of the findings of fact? Do you want me to go through them one at a time or just? Do you have? Anybody have any problem with number one? I don't think there should be anything there, Blake, right? Okay, two. Three. Four. Five. Six.
It states there, does not reveal. Does that preclude, Stephanie, us granting a variance, I mean a?
None tillable.
No, this is not a variance, so one negative one doesn't necessarily have to fail. It would be more of adjustment. You can have one or more as long as there's something on the record that suggests why that's not as important as the other findings. I think what Blake just provided about that splits wise.
It satisfied me, I just wanted to make sure it satisfied you.
Any other comments on six? Seven? Eight? Nine? Does anyone have any comments on this?
My usual comment is that we should get rid of that index.
Okay. Number ten. Okay. Well then, we need to go down to the conditions. Number one. Does everybody agree with that one?
True, I'm so quiet today.
Yeah. Number two. Done.
Oh no, I'm sorry, nothing on two.
Okay, number three. Four.
This Milestone Quarry letter, I understand that's not agriculture, but...
Yeah.
Somehow that should be reflected when we're permitting it. They've stated there where...
Right. Do you want that on four?
No.
I don't know. It's not agricultural, but it's an existing business, doing business in a certain way. The petitioner stated that they're aware of the business, he feels they're shaking and he has put up with it since he was a child, but this is a new petitioner. And in fairness to Milestone Quarries, that should be included here, shouldn't it?
Don?
I was going to suggest we include the milestone as a number five for the record.
Okay, is that acceptable with all of you?
I would second that motion, if that's a motion I would second.
Alright, Don is going to make a motion and Mark will second it. Alright, any further discussion on condition number five? Proposed condition number five. Vince?
The petitioner, do they understand what we're doing?
Counsel, would you explain it?
Essentially, that one of the conditions to the commitment that they're seeking to add would be that there's a recognition of what is contained in the letter that was provided. So just like with the recognition of the right to farm, well, it was already a recommended condition. They would just like...
That just makes it a matter of the record as milestone request, just so that you're aware of the letter. And it goes into the file.
Okay, is that? Oh, we got to vote on this, don't we?
Well, we need a motion, and I'll make a motion.
There's currently a motion to add a condition of five.
Alright, hang on a second.
So we got to vote on that. Sorry, thank you.
Alright, all those in favor of adding condition number five, which basically puts the letter from Milestone Materials into the record, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, this condition is now passed, leaving us with five conditions.
I would make a motion to recommend approval of this petition, accepting the findings presented, as presented by staff, and the conditions as presented by staff with the addition of number five regarding the quarry.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Vince, second sit. Alright, any discussion on this motion? Mark?
I still do not like the fact that we're taking good tillable land and turning it into lawn and house. The comprehensive use plan is very clear on the value of farmland. And I don't like to see it going for homes. Period.
Don?
Can I ask a question of Mark? Mark, where on the, where would you think they could put a home then?
I have no idea.
You're saying they shouldn't have?
Out in the middle of a soybean field.
You're saying they shouldn't have the home?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying there must be someplace, somewhere that...
That's all there is, everything else is all tillable.
Too steep. Well...
That's why we picked that area.
What size is that area, please? The beige field there, that triangular shaped piece?
Soybean field, that's soybeans this year.
That's just a layer that I drew to represent an approximate size of a dwelling, septic well area. But it's going to be a five acre parcel.
I understand the whole parcel's five acres, but do you have the boundaries on this drawing?
And then right behind it is where we have woods, where we have metal.
I don't see it on page...
The application indicated that it was going to be an eighty-four by twenty-four house.
But I don't see the boundaries of the five acres on sheet number or mapping exhibit.
And it hasn't been finalized yet, but it hasn't been surveyed, they're waiting for approval.
I'm just wondering how, it looks like there's hayfield below what was in beans, right?
Yeah, I got a small strip of hay there.
How big is that bean parcel?
It's only like two acres.
It's two acres, Mark, about.
Back to where it is, it's rough, it's brown, you know. The front part is good, you know, then most of that's going to be, you know, it's going to be driveway, it's still going to be true farming.
And it's their own ordinance that forces them to put it there because they don't, can't go on the slope without a lot of problems.
Did I hear you say that you, I mean, the footprint of the house is not five acres?
No.
And it's not all in the soybean field, is it?
No, it's stripped out.
So if we take the twenty-four hundred square feet, you're going to take whatever that is, that's a quarter of an acre or, well, it's not that much. So you've taken that much out, and I believe the, your daughter was born and raised on that farm?
Yeah.
So she really, I don't know, it'd be pretty hard for me to deny somebody the right to give their kid a piece of ground to...
You're still going to farm some of it.
Right, it's still farming, probably half, but at least you don't farm.
Either that or you got a lot of lawn to mow.
Yeah, it's a lot of lawn to mow.
If you just make it right, you have to go five acres.
Yeah, originally, they wanted to split a smaller amount, but due to the number of previous splits, we had to recommend that they went to five acres of three hundred feet of road frontage to avoid the subdivision regulations.
So you made the problem worse?
Oh yeah, it's my fault, yeah.
Does that surprise you at all? Does that surprise you at all?
No, not me.
Alright.
I liked the way they pushed it out on the point a little bit.
Still makes the driveway longer and the driveway then is, you know, that takes up space too.
Any further discussion? Okay, are we ready to vote on a motion to recommend the adoption of this conditional use permit, the findings of facts and the five conditions? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It has been approved by the Winona County Planning Commission, recommended. Next step is it goes to the commissioners and they will ultimately decide. They have more power than we do. So... Counsel? What?
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth.
You think that they need to be there?
I have no idea.
It's generally on the consent agenda, so they don't usually actually discuss them, but there's always the possibility of there's something that comes up.
Will they need to be notified?
Well, by the time you take the, you know, the driveway and then you have a little bit of...
Usually work.
And then you need the yard.
Does that answer your question?
I have a question about that myself.
Okay.
When it's on the consent agenda, could it be moved off that day to the full agenda? But it typically does not have. Do you understand, there's a consent agenda put ahead, put together ahead of the meeting and it'll be decided before the meeting generally. Sometimes it gets moved off to the consent agenda, to the full meeting, but that doesn't usually happen.
So you probably don't need to be there, but there's never a guarantee you don't.
Well, it's...
Just in case someone comes who opposes it and comes to the podium in the two minutes time before the meeting.
Under-recognized resource that we have in this county. According to the comprehensive use plan, it's very clear there.
See, I would recommend that you err on the side of being present because we did have, that wasn't the planning commission decision, but we had a variance, a board of adjustment decision where the guy was a trucker and he didn't show up and he didn't have an attorney representing him and they didn't decide in his favor and it got pretty messy, so...
It would just be a courtesy on your behalf to the board.
That somebody was there. Okay, does that solve the docket number one? Let's go on to docket number two then. Let's see, where am I here? On the wrong page.
My clock tells me a time and a so I don't forget.
There we go. Alright, docket number two. Ten eighteen dash eighteen dash oh two, to consider the petition of Greg and Karen Feldman of Little Trout Valley Road, Winona, in regards to the following conditional use permit request. Allow for the placement of a dwelling to be located within the rural heritage district on less than forty acres, proposed five point five acres pursuant to chapter ten point four point six of the Winona County zoning ordinance. You got this one too, Blake?
I do, thank you. So, um, yeah, like you said, it's located right here on the split of a Little Trout Valley Road and a Hughesman Ridge Road, just outside of Pickwick there, and it's actually directly adjacent to the CD district, so this next parcel over is all the CD part of Pickwick. The petitioner currently has an existing dwelling located here on the south side of Little Trout Valley Road, and he plans to split off five point five acres that kind of follows the road here along the parcel, and then leave the rest of the existing parcel with the current residential dwelling. And they do, for some of you, maybe you were a part of it or remember the name, they have an existing CUP for a home occupation for building paddles there, but the petitioners indicated that they're currently not operating that business anymore. So, yeah. Proposed five point five acre parcel that kind of splits between the road there, and a very minimal amount of the parcel is prime soils, and it's not currently being tilled. And the corner of it is on top of a type three soils, which is a prime soil in our ordinance, but isn't a prime soil by the USDA's classification. So here is the location, and that shop back there is where the CUP was to grant the home occupation of the paddle business, and the new dwelling would kind of be right up here on top of this grassed area. And it is just out, because most of Pickwick is within the shoreline, but this site is actually just outside of the shoreline, so the shoreline puts a three hundred foot buffer on this stream, and that area kind of comes right through here, so it does not require the additional CUP for a dwelling within the shoreline, because it is probably fifty feet outside of the shoreline. And here's kind of a video to show that, so we're facing kind of northwest towards Pickwick, and then we'll rotate back down, and there's a new dwelling there on that parcel that was empty that I showed you, that's part of the CD district, so they did not need a CUP, being that they're within the CD district. And then that's where Little Trout Valley Road and Hughesman Ridge Road kind of split, and where the proposed five point five acre parcel line would follow. So a big part of this eastern parcel is essentially unusable because of the road setbacks, and he owns the area where the two roads split, and the area between the roads is actually also very steep, so there's really not anything that could be put in that area. The slopes are, I believe, almost all over twenty-five percent in that area, and we haven't heard anything from any of the neighbors on this petition as well. The township indicated that they had no comment, and prime soils are less than forty percent. I believe they were like eight percent when I calculated that out. Any questions?
Mark has got a question, Blake.
Yes.
Driveway?
So I think they're planning to use the existing access point and then kind of branch off of that. So there's an existing access point right here, and I'm assuming they would come in and then branch off to the dwelling, but I guess...
The picture I have shows a garage on the backside of their house, so...
They, they may, if, if they do try to access it from that side, I guess I see that drawing as well, then they would need to get permission from the township to add another driveway there, but I know second driveways are, are pretty rare, and I know they are sometimes denied, so they might need to find another way to gain access, but that is, they can always apply for that driveway access permit. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay. At this time, does the petitioners wanna talk about their proposal?
Sure.
State your name and address, please.
I'm Greg Feldman, currently live at two four three seven nine Little Trout Valley Road, and I want to move across the street. We've lived there for thirty-two years, and in that time, none of this has ever been tilled or used for any agricultural use. Actually, the fields that used to be, used to be a field that was technically in Pickwick was, was farmed for quite a while, and that's been split in the lots, and as you mentioned, both of those lots are now built on, so it used to be three house, four houses in the area, and now there's six. So this is really just adding another house kind of in the same, right along the road. We, basically, we'd just like to stay in the country and build ourselves a, you know, a one level, two bedroom, small retirement home, that's what we're looking to do. I did the five acres, 'cause as you mentioned, there's a, there's about three and a half acres that's between the two roads. It's usable for absolutely nothing except a deer stand, and actually, right through the middle of it goes the power line, and they keep that open anyway, so there's really nothing you could ever do on that piece of property, so it was like, I may as well keep it, 'cause it's just a natural boundary of the two roads going on each side of it, so, and my favorite maple tree is for taking sap off of, are in that little triangle too, so that was the reason behind it, but we're just basically looking to stay in, in the neighborhood and build ourselves, you know, a retirement home right across the street. So, if you have any questions?
What, what will happen with your existing home?
Uh, we would, after we build, we would put it up for sale. It would be a house with about thirty-six acres of greater than twenty-five percent sloped bluff land, almost all of it. I mean, it goes straight up from the house and over Hughesman Ridge, so none of that is tillable, it's listed as timber. I've had it surveyed for timber, and nobody wants to go in, 'cause it's too steep. So, we, we would look to sell it with the rest of the land.
Any other questions?
I guess I'm going on Mark's, what was the plan for the garage and the driveway?
Um, we, because we were waiting really till we have, get this done before we'd go for development certificate, we're not quite sure exactly where the house will go, but it meets all the setbacks, it isn't on bluff land, it isn't on too steep a slope, it isn't in, whatever you call it, watershed, shoreline district, so we, there currently is a shop there, it's fifteen hundred square feet, you did approve a little over two years ago for me to triple the size of that shop and put in septic and water and all of that, and we sure, between doing that and pricing that out and figuring out if we're gonna build that shop, it became obvious that a forty-five hundred to five thousand square foot shop in that area would actually devalue the property, 'cause nobody would ever want to buy it. So we actually, the business is still up and running, but we moved it into town. So that basically now is my private shop, and we'd be building a house on that, and I would keep it. The driveway question, yeah, it all depends on where we put the house, if we could use the current driveway or petition for a second one or figure something out, so. Current house has a detached garage with it, but it's on the same side of the road as the current house.
Any further questions of the petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we need a motion.
I'll move to open the public hearing. Second.
Okay, Chris moves, Kelly seconds, to open the public hearing on docket number two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The public hearing on docket number two is now open. Anyone wishing to speak, either for or against, please step forward, state your name and address. Okay, anyone wishing to comment on docket number two, please step forward, state your name and address. Well, not even the mice are moving, so... Okay, all, anyone wishing to comment on PC docket ten dash eighteen dash eighteen dash oh two, please step forward, state your name and address.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Don moves, and Arlie seconds, that we close the public hearing on docket number two. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on docket number two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Public hearing is now closed. Any comments or questions of anyone? Don?
Given that condition number, whatever it is, one, that's always, and looking at condition number one requires the petitioner to abide all representations made during the hearing. Staff analysis number six.
What page are you on?
Page six of the petition, page thirty-eight of the packet. Top of the page makes reference to use of an existing driveway. I, no, I, I don't think it's, the intent of the commission to lock them into using the existing driveway at this point, that they need the opportunity to go off the county road, town road, whatever it is, if they should decide to want to apply for that. So I think number six here could lock them, lock them out of that opportunity. Is that right?
Counsel, okay.
Number six in the findings of fact references the proposed lot, has an existing non-tillable area, and so any staff comments were primarily intended toward the tillable aspect of things and the driveway access is not really the point of number six.
What?
To determine whether it's an existing non-tillable area.
No, no.
In the finding of fact.
Number six at the, beginning at the bottom of page thirty-seven of the packet alludes to use of the existing driveway.
We're not on finding of fact.
The finding of fact that the staff was analyzing was an existing non-tillable.
Not on the staff report.
No, I... Not on the staff report, not on the fact.
All right.
You're looking at the staff...
Staff report, number six.
Yep, she's looking at the findings of fact, and you're looking at staff reports.
The findings of fact on the finding of fact.
Is that on? Oh, okay.
Well, the, the findings of fact, number six pertains to tillable and non-tillable. Number six of the staff analysis alludes to use of the existing driveway, which is not, not the context of number six of the findings of fact.
I guess what, what I would add is that if someone was able to get a driveway access permit from whatever the governing, we would not, we would never tell them they couldn't use it. Anyone who was able to get an access permit would allow them to use that access.
Well, that should be a matter of the record.
Yeah, absolutely, but I just want everyone to be aware that if someone got an access permit, we would never deny it under any...
How can we adequately handle this here tonight? Make it a matter of the record?
Yeah, you know, maybe just to add on to that, on six, you know, it is a finding that when you're looking at a new building site, and that's what this exercise is, is to determine whether or not this parcel is a billable site, the pre-existing condition is that you have a driveway that's already there, so it's basically, I think, just acknowledging that they do not have to put in another, they don't have to cut down the new road, put in crushed rock, disturb a, maybe a natural area under most situations for a new building. So recognizing the fact that there's already an existing driveway, it's already had some pre-development, some...
So the intent here with this staff analysis, number six, is to allow them the opportunity to use the existing driveway.
Yes.
And not to preclude them to doing something else.
Quite well taken. So is there something we should put in after that? Not really?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
I think it's been discussed well enough here tonight, so it's a matter of the record.
Okay, um, at this time, are we ready to go through the findings of fact then?
Do something. Forty-two.
Forty-two? Okay, I'll get there. Yeah, that's true too. Well, there's...
Instead of going through each one individually, could you, maybe just...
Yeah.
Give us a couple, a minute or two to...
All right, everybody look at them and see if you got anything, if you got an objection to. There is ten of them.
Can I ask a question that I just...
Mark?
What is rural heritage, and how does that differ from, because I'm not familiar with the rural heritage district?
It was, when the last ordinance was adopted, properties that were made non-conforming due to being too close to one of the underlying overlay districts, in order to make them fully compliant and not non-conforming, we created the rural heritage district, and, and then, and it built a building envelope within three hundred feet of the existing buildings, so that's, it could apply to a farm, could apply to a dwelling, could apply to anything...
So it's not an area, it's a parcel?
Explain that.
It is based on, as I recall, and you were more involved than me, but to answer Mark's question, I believe it was based on, without using the word grandfathering.
Okay. I, I think I see what he's saying, yeah.
Nobody wanted to use grandfathering, so the compromise was rural heritage district, but it's the same thing.
Okay.
These are places that were built in many ways.
Under today's ordinance, it wouldn't comply or be allowed.
Right.
So you can't tear them all down, because that'd be about ninety percent of Winona County.
And then they change the law, and they'd have to take out the other ten percent, right?
Yeah, that's right. And then, and then the red-breasted kooko may, may come back to its natural flyway.
Don?
I have a comment, on number nine.
All right.
My usual comment, that we need to get rid of this composite score, because we're always waiving it anyhow.
In any, any...
But we can't do that tonight.
No, we can't, but for the record, for the future agenda, in a review, we need to review that.
I spend about an hour driving back and forth here, about once a month, Thursday, and I, it's a boring time, and the thing that comes up, because I know a little bit about functioning businesses, and when something isn't working, they change the procedure, okay, to accommodate the way things are done. Even Mayo Clinic, my wife was expecting additional testing through whatever, PET scan, I guess, and the doctor said, we've done away with that. We don't do that. We only do that when the base shows that something has changed, the blood work, and then we do one, okay? We were expecting one every two or three months, but they, they saw that it was non-value added to have it, so they did away with it, okay? Every business I ever worked with did that. Government doesn't seem to want to do that, but lessons learned make everybody better.
So how, how could we get, if Don wants this on a future agenda, how do, how would we get that onto a future agenda?
We will look and see who, who's the one that you wanted. I'm not sure I'm talking my head out.
No, that's this, this number here, he's talking about.
Counsel says that they will look into who's ever responsible for changing this or getting it on the agenda.
I think the ordinance says that the planning commission can bring forward items that they want.
they want, but that in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
This is, I don't, it's not in the zoning ordinance, though.
What?
It's not in the zoning ordinance.
It refers to it in the zoning ordinance.
It refers to it, but it's not part of the zoning ordinance, which is, I want to make sure whose responsibility it would be to review.
What?
It's a part of the comp plan.
Which is done over ten years.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Since we can't resolve this tonight, and the staff is going to be looking into how we might resolve it in the future, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend this petition for approval with the findings of fact as presented by staff and the conditions as presented by staff.
I would second that.
Okay, Kelly makes the motion to recommend, and Richard seconded it. Steve, you've got something to say? I thought you did.
Well, I just think that that certainly circumvented this conversation Don was working on.
It should be a matter of the record that the planning commission wants that reviewed.
All right, is that agreeable? Okay. Any discussion about the recommendation proposal? Hearing none. All those in favor of recommending docket number two with the findings of fact and the conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We, the planning commission recommends that this be approved by the county commissioners at whatever date they have that, and I guess, okay.
Just to clarify what, what we're charged with doing here, Commissioner Everson has stated that the planning commission wants to find out, wants that reviewed, the future land use plan of the comprehensive plan. Is that a determination by a motion or an overall vote by the planning commission? Or is this just desperate information?
I'll make that as a motion, that the planning commission recommends that that provision of the comp plan and ordinance, as is reflected in ordinance, be reviewed.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Steve seconded it. Any further discussion?
I guess that I, I'd like to understand what statute says with regard to revising the comp plan, if that is the source for that particular item. I, I think there's a process to go through, and I, I don't object going through it, but I, I'd like, I'd like to understand that.
For an agenda item for next month to provide you with the information about how that could be revised and who would be responsible, rather than actually taking an act, because I'm motion to review.
So my motion is.
My understanding originally was that we wanted to understand how that could be done, and I, I thought they were going to be looking into it, is that?
That's the intent of my mo, somebody suggested it'd be a formal motion to assure that it gets done.
Thank you.
So I made the motion.
So you're, thank you.
So the motion is an agenda item for next month to provide information regarding how that could be reviewed or revised?
Okay, is that agreeable? Oh, okay, let's vote on the motion then. You want to re, you already did. Did we?
No.
No.
We were discussing.
We voted on the docket.
And just discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not the motion to investigate them out.
We need to vote on the motion that's been made and seconded.
All right. Let's vote on the motion that's been made by Don and seconded by.
Steve.
Steve to look into amending the, or.
Reviewing.
Reviewing the.
Information regarding who would be responsible for reviewing the comp plan in the process for next month.
Right, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It is passed. Okay, I think we have one more. I believe that you go to the same, it'll be on the docket, the same county meeting as the previous one?
Yeah. Thirteen, thirty-nine?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, where are we at now?
Page fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. There we go. All right, agenda item PC ten dash eighteen dash eighteen oh three. Eric.
Okay, the next conditional use permit, ten eighteen eighteen-three, is to allow a conditional use permit for egg-oriented business, according to chapter ten, four, six, number two. Currently, this is in section thirty-five of Saratoga Township. The property is about seventy-five acres, but the applicants also have another five-acre parcel that contains the house that is located to the west. There's been a recently constructed steel building in this location. The pictures and the video footage will show much more detail with that, as well as there's been point seven tenths of an acre that's been designated for outside storage for trailers and for parts and for equipment identified just north of that. Zoomed out slightly, and this would show that Gedke Lane is a private drive that serves this property as well as the dwelling here. It also is a site of a sand extraction pit that was permitted, I believe, in two thousand thirteen, that is right in here, we'll keep zooming out, that shows that. There's adjacent residential dwelling that's located to the east, right in this area, and then the petitioner's residential site in that location. The shed is approximately seventy-four by two hundred, with the shop being seventy-four by eighty. Petitioner submitted comments that one bay would be designated for a co-applicant, Randy Stegemeier, in which he would operate custom repair on trucks, equipment, grain trucks, and those type of mechanicals. Now, zooming out once again in this exhibit showing the seventy-five acre parcel, as well as the five acres that the co-applicants own with a dwelling, the garage located in this area, the sand activity, mining operation is in this location. Also wanted to show where the township road transverses to the east and is connected to one thirteen. In dealing with the conditional use permit in two thousand thirteen on this site, considerable information and study was brought forth just on the hazardous nature of that intersection of that private road in one thirteen. The terrain is such that if you're coming from the north on one thirteen, there is a series of hills that really restrict and limit view, vision, as you're coming up to the very top, and this is one of those driveways that is, so this has been identified as a concern for any heavy equipment, especially departing the property. So as you get into the staff report, there's some recommended conditions that refer to that. Again, the closest residential neighbor, part of this property is located to the south, right in this location. The driveway comes in and is connected there.
Eric. Who, who, where's the parcel of this client of Whitewater?
That is this property right here.
Thank you.
I just want to point out, there is a recent letter that came that submitted, that's addressing this petition request.
Could you show again on the, where's the dwelling? Neighbor's dwelling?
The neighbor's dwelling.
Down.
Right here.
Okay, great, thanks.
So that looks like that, that lot that the neighbor lives on is tree shrouded from, from the Nesbit proposed property, correct?
Yes, from, from that image, there is a stand of woods that is separated between them. This photo shows a couple of pictures. One, this was taken in August, this just shows, I just wanted to point out a few things, and we'll see it in the video, too, that I'm about to show. There is an office trailer here, and essentially that is associated with the mine operation. You also see some gates, and you'll see some equipment that's associated with the mining operation. However, this picture just shows the recent placement of a lot of the material that has made its way to this property. Thus, we've received a complaint, we've done a follow-up with the letter, thus that's everything a catalyst for this action tonight. And the picture on the right is just me parked off of the county road one thirteen, and this is looking south along there. I just wanted to point out in the one exhibit, too, there's a, one of the conditions of the sand extraction pit was that departing trucks, instead of coming straight out, right on the intersection here, there's a bypass lane that involves another property owner, Tom Campbell, to the south, in which this, this driveway or this access is taken by trucks along here, and then it's allowed at a more suited intersection coming onto one thirteen. There's a better line of sight for both traffic coming from the north and south on that. That's also, if you elect to approve this conditional use permit, there's a recommendation that all outgoing equipment that he's working with, mainly trucks, combines, heavier equipment like that, should utilize that option as well.
Could you show that to us on the overhead map?
Yep. That's the segment right here, and I believe that's roughly thirteen hundred feet that runs along the county road.
And the access, the bypass access is?
Right here. And that's.
Oh, I see, it runs right parallel.
Yeah, runs parallel with the county road.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
Now, that's a private?
That is private, and that's also owned by Tom Campbell, another property owner that is in the, in the, in the meeting tonight, to comment on that part of it.
Vince.
The letter, it just says, Bill, who is Bill? What's the last name? I'm sorry. D E B. And where is the, currently the Stegemeier business? Where, where are they doing business out of right now?
They're operating out of the new metal pole building located right in foreground here. You'll see much better when I get to the video, I, I get views from all angles of it, so. Volume's off? It was pretty windy the day I shot this, I'm not even going to attempt to play that. Okay, so we're looking, this is right off of the Gedke Lane, this is showing the new building in which this request has been made. I believe one bay has been mentioned as what would be occupied by Randy Stegemeier's business, the other two, I believe, has been mentioned that it's for Nesbit's personal farming operation for their equipment and for their repair and things to that nature. There is a signage, there was one small sign, and I believe there might have been some requirements since they, the site is also inspected, I believe federally or from the state for mine safety and things like that, so they do call out some requirements just on the site and stuff, you know, with, with even things that are accessory like this next to it. Yeah, they're kind of panning now to the north, northwest, and this was taken yesterday, so this is the status as of yesterday. The applicant, as mentioned in the staff report, did have a conditional use permit from two thousand eight in Utica Township along Cemetery Road, and it's our understanding that that land had been sold or some, something had happened to that partnership that it absolved, so he's essentially requesting to relocate that to this business. This is looking to the west at the one dwelling that's at the end of the drive, and as I'm panning back, you're, we're looking now to the south, and I believe that is where the property line is on the seventy-five acres, so I believe that stake might even be pretty close to where probably the lot line is.
The wood line.
The stake right, right here, but this is neighboring property. I, I'm trying to point out the driveway that serves Bill's, Bill DeBruker's property and in that direction. And this is a view looking east down Gedke Lane, back at county road one thirteen, way in the distance. And now the last part of the video footage will be showing more top of, top of the hill closer to the county road.
Question, quick. Them all in trucks, is that part of the sand mine, or is that part of?
There's at least one truck that belongs to Tom Rolcamp, the operator, and there might be some of the other equipment, but I'm, I'm assuming that most of the equipment what you see belongs to the co-applicant, Randy Stegemeier. And this is showing that the office building, therefore IT Sand is right in this location, so that's not connected to, to this.
That, that's not connected to this petition?
Correct. And this would be the entrance to sand mine. I do go up closer, I believe they do have that posted, and I believe they, I did hear that they were operating, so I imagine they have a protocol for, for sealing that, there is a swinging lock gate that, that can go shut. I believe I, yeah, come up here and just to see the signage. There is signage with the alteration site further to the east to it, trying to prevent any vehicles from going into it the wrong way, there's do not enter signs, there's some speed limit posted signs that are there. Again, this is a view looking to the south, this would be the adjacent properties, that would be agricultural field and then beyond woods. Okay, again, this now is further down the road, I'm looking back at the Nesbit property. And that's county road one thirteen. And right there is, is the intersection. Makes somewhat of kind of a incline up to this point, so traffic coming from the north onto the site, there is difficult sightlines.
That's, that's where that service road is, right there.
Yes. This is still the county road, and that, right below it, I'll, I'll scan back to it, too. Here now, I wanted to show the nearest adjacent residential dwelling, Bill DeBruker residence and surrounding acreage, and the driveway coming out right, right to that point. And the building in which the request has been made. And there's the bypass. I've, I've been informed that the culverts, that are a result of the county highway project, have been removed as of, as of, you know, within the last. have been removed as of yes, as of, you know, within the last day or so. And that's county road 113 and Getkey Lane, which is a private road. And there is signage there that says all trucks must use the bypass departing.
You said Getkey Lane is a private drive, but yet there's multiple people that live on there?
Yes.
Who owns it?
Yeah, who owns it?
Pardon?
Tom Campbell owns it.
Tom Campbell? And, and the users have easements then?
Yeah, I don't.
Eric? I'll leave that one hand displayed. Eric?
Who maintains this private drive?
The private property owners through whatever agreement that they have amongst each other.
In other words, they have to plow the snow on it?
Yes. That is not a township road.
So I, I'm a little bit confused based on some of the descriptions. Is this an after the fact?
Yes.
Okay. So the work is already, the land use is already happening and they're applying for a CUP now?
Yes, because of the exterior storage that, that was verified and it's very apparent that he probably has started, yes, and that repaired it is.
Where, where are the boundaries of the mining CUP?
Well, from my understanding, I'd have to get out that file, but if there was a, a very natural pro, protrusion that had the sand deposit, and I, I don't want to speculate on the acres, that'd be a question for the applicants that could verify, but I believe they are. Yep, so there, there's somebody here that can-
Pardon?
There, there's people here that can state the size, but it's my understanding, you know, from what you see on this aerial, it pretty, gives you a pretty good idea that the boundaries of this would perhaps be, you know, there might be some material, but there is some, um-
And those-
Overburden that's been placed to the side that they plan to use for, for reclamation though too. So I, I don't want to say this whole thing, but there's some, some material that they're going to use with the restoration as well.
And those boundaries were intended to limit extraction?
Correct, it was limited to the deposit and the terrain and the engineering that they had to, to go after a certain amount and a certain depth and, you know, they probably have a pretty good bead on what that is. Um, I've heard that there might only be two to three years of material there left that they plan to pursue.
Well, if you're running a mining operation, you need room for storing and maintaining equipment, uh, that's related to that. So is there something in this mining CUP that limits? Limits, excludes? Equipment and, and, and maintenance off the limits of the mine?
The mining CUP would limit it to the footprint that they've identified, but they also did have staging areas and they are also-
There are staging areas in the CUP?
Yes, because of-
That's my question, thank you.
The gate and the office and, yes, there is some, some obligation that they keep that clear to still avoid congestion too.
So right now, there, the picture shows a lot, awful lot of vehicles here. Are there, there are three entities that own all those vehicles? Farmer, the mining operation and the repair business, are they all co-
To some degree, yes, but I'd say the, the co-applicant is the, clearly the majority holder of all that most of the heavy equipment that's there.
And then roughly how many units are there?
Oh, yeah, I speculate probably three dozen.
And those are all vehicles that are being repaired?
Yeah, and so some were parked, I mean, for, I think, a part container to, to keep things out of the elements, as well as there may be some part vehicles for use as chassis, motors, um, some of the equipment that could be used in repair. But yeah, that's obviously the exterior storage is, is an issue over here.
And then the, there was a letter that came late from this Whitetail Properties. The person the letter is addressed to, were they, is that a longstanding landowner there or are they new to the?
I, I believe this property for residential purposes was created in the early two thousands, so it's probably about fifteen years or so. Nineteen ninety-nine?
And it's for sale now, so. Thank you.
This business was up and going in nineteen ninety-nine? The farm and the sand pit?
No, the sand activity would have been in two thousand thirteen.
And the, the repair was being done elsewhere?
Correct, in a different township in two thousand eight for ten years.
So, so there was never a CUP for the repair that's going on there?
On this property, correct.
For the repair of the, of the co-petitioner?
Correct, on this-
Certainly the mining operator is entitled to do repairs of his, his equipment and the staging area.
As well as the farmer?
Yeah.
I guess, well. Are any further questions of Eric? Okay, thank you, Eric. Uh, okay, at this time, does any one of the petitioners want to speak to the group or?
David Nesbit, the fourteen forty-four Getkey Lane. If you've seen that picture of the, the trailers there, me myself, I have five trucks and ten trailers, and them are mine. And the rest of them would be Randy's.
Which is all storage for parts and stuff to repair. Multiple units for the whole community. Most of it, probably eighty percent all ag-related, some commercial. Like I just went on a search call before I got here tonight to help belly dump truck to slay asphalt, which died along the road with hot asphalt, so I rushed out there to get that fixed, uh, heat going, so. I keep it all openly. I get-
Excuse me, Randy, you better state your name and-
Randy Stegemeier.
Talk into the mic, please.
What's that? Uh, Randy Stegemeier. I reside at McNally Ridge Road, um, twenty-seven, three, three nine six, I guess. My current or previous shop was twenty-six, five oh eight Cemetery Road with Earl Bachanour, which I got a condition use ten years ago to operate the business there, which I've been operating there for twenty-one years. And, uh, Earl's health is getting real bad, the family and stuff, so they got a grandson that wants to take over the farm and stuff, so I had to move out. So Dave, a good friend of mine, worked on his stuff for years and years, for probably twenty years.
It would just be in your capacity on the town board? Did your town board specifically discuss this application?
Yeah, he comes to the meeting, we just put no comment down.
Sure. And so is there another area that the salvage yard could, could be moved to temporarily that could be screened?
What's that area to the right of the driveway labeled?
Parking.
Parking?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is that trees or just, just slope?
What's our obligation with respect to if there's parts of trucks, complete trucks, oil, antifreeze, uh, things that are associated with contaminants from a salvage yard? I mean, are, are we in fact, are we permitting a salvage yard here or? Well, are we inadvertently?
Condition seven.
I got one question for Eric. Has there been any complaints, the, the years up there at Bachanour's, from anybody operating the business there?
No, that file did not-
What's chapter nine point eight? Condition three.
Low key, you can see a little bit from the Cemetery Road out there, just a little spot of it.
I know.
Kind of similar.
Neighbor's right across the road, which built new houses and stuff and.
Randy, I-
Chris, go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out a way to, to work this out that you can have the business and we can move forward, but that the landowner also gets some satisfaction.
Right.
So in our conditions, and I'm just floating this as an idea, if, if you feel like you're going to be getting all the truck engines, you know, the trucks out of there and ultimately you would only be left with a certain number of trailers, right? And that's where you'll be storing things.
Yep.
Uh, I'm thinking it might be possible for us in the conditions to ultimately say that that's what would be in the storage area. I don't know if that's possible or not. And that sort of then, the other things that are currently being stored there ultimately aren't allowed by the condition of use permit, which means they must be moved at some point.
That's what I'm working on is I'm gonna-
And is that, I mean-
I'm gonna try and get rid of most of all them trucks in a short time.
Ultimately, we could agree to that as a board, would that be acceptable to you? And how many trucks do you think you'd, truck, trailers do you think you'd need up there to, you know, fifteen or?
Yeah, let's say fifteen or so.
And that would fit in the point seven?
Oh, yeah, there, there's that many already right there.
Okay. All right, well, so that's something for us to think about.
Mark? Uh, counsel, is what she's talking about enforceable?
It would be, um, if, if you're very specific in the condition as far as what is allowed, anything outside of that.
By date, timeline?
It's forever.
You can say that by this date you will have no more than, does not, and anything after that would be considered violation of the conditions.
I wonder, does the applicant understand the word tri would have to be left out?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Uh, you have to understand, we're trying to reach, what Chris is bringing up is to get an agreement with everybody and if I'm one of your neighbors who wants to build a house or has built a house, somebody say, well, eventually I will. These aren't figurines we're talking about, these are, you know, being a collector.
Yep.
And just a, a clarification on, when you say trailer, you're talking about like a semi? I think so. Trailer. Okay. And none of those were there before either? No, I think maybe there were some.
They're not in that same designated area though, are they? Or they are?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that kind of, um, makes it gray and fuzzy because we're gonna allow, um-
Yeah, I get your point.
And there's gonna be these other ten that are gonna, so now the number is not clear.
Arlie, you got a question?
Realistically, Randy, what, what is your, you know, we're just looking here, what is your timeframe on getting that straightened out and getting all them trailers put in that point seven? I mean, without cutting yourself short, you know, we, we know you got your, your hands full.
By the end of the year, I, I need to be totally out of earls.
Okay. So realistically, by next summer?
Next summer.
Next fall?
Fall. Probably within a-
Within a year?
Year, year and a half, I'll have that cleaned right out.
And what would you feel comfortable with i- if you didn't? Nothing, I know.
All the way for scrap, I guess. I don't know, it's.
Counsel?
Okay. Don? When we get to the conditions, I will propose that for the seven tenths of an acre, there be eight, eight inch diameter or square treated posts placed on each of the six corners. And that for, and we, we give him until the end of calendar year twenty nineteen to get consolidated into that space. And beyond that, it'd be revocation of the permit.
Could I just interject this? That's seven tenths of an acre, that's dedicated for you or do your trailers take up part of that? Okay, so you're in the parking area, so, so he's not gonna be handicapped by, by your trailers.
We're, we're talking about seven tenths of an acre for Randy's business. The, the landowner has other rights.
Yep.
I want to make sure.
And, um, Don, how would you feel about not allowing the trucks, but just having the trailers?
Not allowing?
The trucks or anything else, other than just the trailers with the storage inside?
Well, you can hardly do that.
Some, some I'm gonna fix and sell.
Yeah.
You know, for progress. I got a green truck out there, I gotta get fixed and stuff.
But you, he's saying that he's gonna get rid of the, he's got like trucks, like the engine part of a semi, right?
It's whole chassis, it's a whole rolling chassis.
He's gonna get rid of those.
Well, I, I think he should be allowed to use it for trucks or trailers as the seven tenths of an acre as he sees fit for his business.
But that's kind of the issue.
Pardon?
That's the, then, then we are talking about a salvage yard.
No, we are not. We're talking about storage for his business.
For parts.
However, he wants to use the seven tenths of an acre.
Hey, you know what? If it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. If it's a salvage yard, we gotta permit a salvage yard.
Well, let's just, let's just back up and think about this. He's gonna bring, you know, somebody's gonna have a truck that breaks down.
He can't?
He can't necessarily turn it around in, in five minutes. He might have five customers that got trucks that are rolling.
Yeah, no, that's not the issue, the issue.
We have to be reasonable.
No, the issue is that he has-
Parts truck.
Parts, trucks for parts. Yeah, trucks for parts. So they're broken down and he just takes parts to fix other agents.
Sure, 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 I, I understood that.
But he's saying he's gonna get a salvage yard. He's saying he's gonna get rid of them. That's what you're planning on getting rid of.
I'm trying to get rid of the truck.
Right, and so if we're looking for a way to force that.
At the very same time, you said prices of scrap is in the tank, which to me is saying, I don't want to part with it now until right, until prices come back. And I mean, that might be- And I mean, that might be.
Spring is gonna be, spring is gonna be up again.
Maybe.
Somewhat.
Always is in the spring.
Yep.
Um.
I, I've got it.
Seven tenths of an acre is that, not that much room for semi-trailers and trucks. It's premium space and he'll have to contain his operations to it. And let him use it however he wants.
Mark, you have a?
Um, well, back to fuzzy dice here. He gets seven tenths an acre and then the farmer can have how much ever he wants, so how do we know?
Mr. Row Camp is gonna stage some trucks out there probably too.
Right. And how do we know Mr. Row Camp doesn't go from ten trucks to thirty trucks all of a sudden and now we're right back to where we started?
And what about the ones that customers are bringing in to be worked on? How do they count?
That's, that's what I mean. How do you know whose is what? Because Don says we should put posts around and that's his and then everything outside of that and now is, must be his then?
There, there's an area designated as parking. Whose is that to use? Yours, yours exclusively. Okay, so where will his clients park? In the seven tenths of an acre?
No, there is room in that parking area.
Okay, as well as you.
Yeah.
You say you have ten trucks now? Are you ever gonna expand to twelve, fifteen, twenty? Ten trucks as part of the business?
They have designated an area for storing on the petition.
I guess my problem is, is like Tom, Tom Campbell said, if, if it was a farm with a bunch of crap laying around, we wouldn't even be here.
Well, that's right.
And we, we all know plenty of farms that have a lot of crap laying around. And. I don't know.
Don.
Should we move to the findings of facts and then the conditions and have further discussion as we do that?
It's up to, is that agreeable with the commission or?
I do, I think it's a good idea.
I guess I, I have a quest, a general question for Eric before we get into this. I mean, in the past, have you had such, other situations where, um, something was applied for, after the fact?
Yes.
That, that neighbors had issues with? And how were these resolved?
By conditions.
And do you feel the conditions laid out, um, answer the neighbors' concerns?
No, I think that's where we point out where there is problems and we are looking, based on what you heard today, all the information, where are the gaps, what needs to be fortified and what are the conditions that would be enforceable? As far as staff position, enforceable, that's, I mean, we, we heard a lot of other, initially you heard those other elements. We're just a small department with a couple of people and we have to do the best as we can when we make complaints. So what is enforceable, what is manageable, what fits, what?
Sure.
Would be compatible for the Sony.
Um, and so is there another area that the salvage yard could, could be moved to temporarily that could be screened?
Unless they move further to the west, but I don't know the dynamics. I have a block that's under the same area of maps. I, you know, I might not be able to. Then you're just essentially hiding the issue.
What's that area to the right of the driveway labeled?
Parking.
Parking?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, I guess maybe what you just mentioned, it looks like, you know, the water is five acres, but that's a upper parcel with the house on it. You know, it comes ahead. The terrain is quite severe. There's a puddle layer, a line that's going to show that there's been a lot of photography behind it.
Is that trees or just, just slope?
It's old pasture, but it's just considerable slope.
What, what's our obligation with respect to if there's parts of trucks, complete trucks, oil, antifreeze, things that are associated with contaminants from a salvage yard? I mean, are, are we in fact, are we permitting a salvage yard here or?
The only thing on the table today is whether or not you are authorizing the agricultural related business. I think the reason the word salvage yard keeps coming up is because of the amount of the stuff there that under other areas might be considered a salvage yard by definition, but you're not looking to commit a salvage yard as part of this.
Well, are we inadvertently?
Well, I think a better, a more appropriate term to use would be exterior storage of materials and vehicles.
Condition seven.
I got one question for Eric. Has there been any complaints the, the years up there at Backnowers from anybody operating a business there?
No, that file did not.
What's chapter nine point eight? Condition three.
Yep, low key, you can see a little bit from the cemetery road out there, just a little spot of it.
I know.
Kind of similar.
Did that, did they share a driveway with somebody else at the back of the road?
No.
Um, I do have.
Neighbor's right across the road, which built new houses and stuff and.
Randy, I.
Chris, go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out a way to, to work this out that you can have the business and we can move forward, but that the landowner also gets some satisfaction.
Right.
So, in our conditions, and I'm just floating this as an idea, if you feel like you're going to be getting all the truck engines, you know, the trucks out of there, and ultimately you would only be left with a certain number of trailers, right? And that's where you'll be storing things.
Yep.
I, I'm thinking it might be possible for us in the conditions to ultimately say that that's what would be in the storage area. I don't know if that's possible or not. And that sort of then the other things that are currently being stored there ultimately aren't allowed by the conditional use permit, which means they must be moved at some point.
That's what I'm working on is I'm gonna.
And is that, I mean.
I'm gonna try and get rid of most of all them trucks in a short time.
Ultimately, we could agree to that as a board, would that be acceptable to you? And how many trucks do you think you'd, truck, trailers do you think you'd need up there to, you know, fifteen or?
Yeah, let's say fifteen or so.
And that would fit in the point seven?
Oh, yeah. There, there's that many already right there.
Okay. All right, well, so that's something for, let's think about.
Mark.
Uh, counsel, is what she's talking about enforceable?
It would be, um, if, if you're very specific in the condition as far as what is allowed, anything outside of that.
By date, timeline?
It's forever.
You can say that by this date you will have no more than, does not, and anything after that would be considered violation of the conditions.
I wonder, does the applicant understand the word try would have to be left out?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You have to understand, we're trying to reach, what Chris is bringing up is to get an agreement with everybody. And if I'm one of your neighbors who wants to build a house or has built a house, somebody say, well, eventually I will. These aren't figurines we're talking about. These are, you know, being a collector.
Yep.
And just a clarification on, when you say trailer, you're talking about like a semi?
I think so.
Trailer.
Okay.
And none of those were there before either?
No, I think maybe there were some.
He's got ten of them.
Yeah, he's got ten of them.
But.
They're not in that same designated area though, are they? Or they are?
So.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I mean, that kind of makes it gray and fuzzy because we're gonna allow.
Yeah, I get your point.
And there's gonna be these other ten that are gonna, so now the number is not clear.
Arlie, you got a question?
Realistically, Randy, what, what is your, you know, we're just looking here. What is your timeframe on getting that straightened out and getting all them trailers put in that point seven? I mean, without cutting yourself short, you know, we, we know you got your, your hands full.
By the end of the year, I, I need to be totally out of earls.
Okay. So realistically by next summer?
Next summer.
Next fall?
Fall. Probably within a.
Within a year?
Year, year and a half, I'll have that cleaned right out.
And what would you feel comfortable with i- if you didn't? Nothing, I know.
All the way for scrap, I guess. I don't know, it's.
Um, counsel.
Just, just everybody's clear, the, uh, I guess the consequence for failing to meet conditions would be revocation of the conditional use permit, no longer able to operate the business. So, just that way we don't have to spell out any penalties within the permit. That is what the ordinance will provide for.
Okay. Don.
When we get to the conditions, I will propose that for the seven tenths of an acre, there'd be eight, eight inch diameter or square treated posts placed on each of the six corners. And that for, and we, we give him until the end of calendar year 2019 to get consolidated into that space. And beyond that, it'd be revocation of the permit.
Could I just interject this? That's seven tenths of an acre? That's dedicated for you or do your trailers take up part of that?
No, I'm in the parking area.
Okay, so you're in the parking area, so, so he's not gonna be handicapped by, by your trailers.
We're, we're talking about seven tenths of an acre for Randy's business.
Probably.
The, the landowner has other rights.
Yep. I want to make sure.
And, um, Don, how would you feel about not allowing the trucks, but just having the trailers?
Not allowing?
The trucks or anything else, other than just the trailers with the storage inside?
Well, you can't hardly do that.
No.
Oh, he.
That will work.
Some, some I'm gonna fix and sell.
Yeah.
You know, for progress. I got a green truck out there, I gotta get fixed and stuff.
But you, he's saying that he's gonna get rid of the, he's got like trucks, like the engine part of a semi, right?
Whole chassis, it's a whole rolling chassis.
He's gonna get rid of those.
Well, I, I think he should be allowed to use it for trucks or trailers as the seven tenths of an acre as he sees fit for his business.
But that's kind of the issue.
Pardon?
That's the, then, then we are talking about a salvage yard.
No, we are not.
No, no, not that outdoor storage.
We're talking about storage for his business.
For parts.
However, he wants to use the seven tenths of an acre.
Hey, you know what? If it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. If it's a salvage yard, we gotta permit a salvage yard.
Well, let's just, let's just back up and think about this. He's gonna bring, you know, somebody's gonna have a truck that breaks down.
He can't?
He can't necessarily turn it around in, in five minutes. He might have five customers that got trucks that are.
Yeah, no, that's not the issue. The issue.
We have to be reasonable.
No, the issue is that he has.
Parts truck.
Parts, trucks for parts. Yeah, trucks for parts. So they're broken down and he just takes parts to fix other agents.
Sure, sure, sure. I, I understood that.
But he's saying he's gonna get a salvage yard.
That's a salvage yard.
He's saying he's gonna get rid of those.
Problem.
That's what you're planning on getting rid of?
I'm trying to get rid of the truck.
Right, and so if we're looking for a way to force that.
At the very same time, you said prices of scrap is in the tank, which to me is saying, I don't want to part with it now until, right, until prices come back. And I mean, that might be five years.
Spring is gonna be up again.
Maybe.
Somewhat.
Always is in the spring.
Yep.
Um.
I, I've got it.
Seven tenths of an acre is that, not that much room for semi-trailers and trucks. It's premium space and he'll have to contain his operations to it. And let him use it however he wants.
Mark, you have a?
Um, well, back to fuzzy dice here. He gets seven tenths an acre and then the farmer can have how much ever he wants, so how do we know?
Mr. Row Camp is gonna stage some trucks out there probably too.
Right. And how do we know Mr. Row Camp doesn't go from ten trucks to thirty trucks all of a sudden and now we're right back to where we started?
And what about the ones that customers are bringing in to be worked on? How do they count?
That's, that's what I mean. How do you know whose is what? Because Don says we should put posts around and that's his and then everything outside of that and now is, must be his then?
There, there's an area designated as parking. Whose is that to use? Yours, yours exclusively. Okay, so where will his clients park? In the seven tenths of an acre?
No, there is room in that parking area.
Okay, as well as you.
Yeah.
You say you have ten trucks now? Are you ever gonna expand to twelve, fifteen, twenty? Ten trailers, but I'm, I mean. I'm just trying to figure this out so that we're not sitting here a year from now, someone complaining, well, we haven't moved a single trailer and yet he's, you know? That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Okay, let, is, thank you, Randy.
Thanks.
Probably there'll be more. I bet there'll be more.
Stay to licensed vehicles as opposed to not licensed vehicles.
Well, can we think of any other thing?
The ordinance says no more than three inoperable vehicles.
The, the ordinance says?
Because salvage yard is three or more inoperable vehicles as part of the definition.
But if we give them seven tenths of an acre?
That's gonna be, yes, it would.
It would still apply, that's still property, land where the inoperable vehicle would be stored.
Pardon?
That is still land where the inoperable vehicle would be stored.
Okay, so what's the definition of an inoperable vehicle?
Salvage yard is land or buildings where waste, recycled materials, discarded, stolen materials are brought, sold, exchanged, stored, cleaned, packed, disassembled or handled, including but not limited to scrap metal, rags, paper, rubber products, glass products, lumber products, products resulting from the wrecking of automobiles or other vehicles. When a site exceeds the allowable amount of inoperable vehicles set forth in chapter nine, the site shall be considered a salvage yard. It's in chapter nine.
It doesn't refer to licensing, it refers to operable.
Well, but any semi-trailer, if the tires are pumped up and the brakes work?
Yeah, and is, is a, is a trailer even part of a vehicle?
Yeah, that I don't know.
Right, is it an inoperable?
They need fixing, they're inoperable, right?
Well, is it, is a trailer even a vehicle?
Right, yeah, right, yeah, right.
Well, it doesn't even fit any of that classification.
We've got a legal mine down there that'll let us know.
Got to license that though.
An inoperable vehicle is automobiles, trucks and other vehicles not currently licensed by the state or which are, because of mechanical efficiency, incapable of movement under their own power parked or stored outdoors.
But this is a repair business, we're expecting inoperable vehicles.
No, but that part's.
Not unlicensed then.
Yeah, that's right. And I, Randy, you did say that your trailers are licensed mostly.
Most everyone is licensed.
Currently, current registrations?
They don't need the license on here.
Well, the.
They're determined licensed on the trailers. You don't have to read them every year.
The trailers, not, not the trucks. Right, that's right, the trailers. So the trailers are licensed.
Oh, my. Oh my, um, can we go on to the condition, our findings of fact?
I'll move, we move on to the findings of facts.
Second. Yes, yes, yes.
We don't need a motion, let's just go.
Wanted to get moving, so.
Make him feel better.
Let's just go.
Page seventy.
Looks like it did anyway.
Yeah, I think they're on page seventy myself.
That's what I thought.
I have a question on number one, in case you want questions.
Five more pages.
Five more pages?
Keep going. Go, oh, no, you're too far.
I went too far.
There you go.
Here we go.
You're good.
All right. Mark?
Well, just the question I have is with, with their comment is how, um, if you can even say that you're gonna affect the traffic on a private drive, because a private drive is a private drive. I can understand the comment on County Road 113, but I, I guess I can't comment, or can't, how you could.
We don't govern a private drive.
Right, we don't govern private drives, that is my question.
Well, we do to a certain extent, because that's a private drive that's used by another conditional use, is that correct, Eric?
Yes.
It's the mine line, and that is regulated.
Okay. There you go.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Don.
I would agree, it might create some incremental burden on existing streets and roads, but I don't know about excessive.
Yeah, it's not like twenty cars coming in out of there every day.
How much additional traffic do you believe it would be? One a day?
Some days there's none, some days there's maybe three or five.
You'd be happy with five a week. Is what I'm thinking. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Uh, Eric, is the concern just that the traffic could be going from the private drive on to 113 at a, at a hard-to-see intersection? Is that the most concern?
There's an N between the drive and the county road.
Eric, is the, is the, um, the issue here, the competition between the new traffic and the already existing mine traffic?
I think there's the potential of a cumulative effect.
Okay.
Incremental.
I personally don't see any problems with the traffic, I mean, that's what we, that's what we paid to build a county road for. They have the right to use their private drive as they see fit. The only thing I would ask is that any trucks exiting be required to use that, um, Roecamp's drive? The one that goes to the south, so it doesn't.
Sure, sure.
So it doesn't enter 113 and go left.
You mean that road that they're currently not using, that they're supposed to be using?
Yeah, they say they are.
Well, that's the assertion, yeah.
I hold my trucks on that road, and it doesn't interfere with traffic. My son might sit, my son might sit on that road when I come by my corner, and it doesn't interfere with traffic.
That's the only thing I, I mean, that's the only traffic concern I have with it. I don't think the petitioner, you, you don't care if you, you're required to use the, I call it the service, the parallel service drive.
But, um, when the sand mine is done, that road could possibly be done too.
Could be redone, or what?
Could be pulled.
Closed.
Pulled back out, be claimed.
Removed, yeah.
Oh, when. When the mine and the truck business are done, is that what you're saying?
No, just the mine.
Just the mine.
That was set up just for the mine.
And that.
That's the only reason.
Do you expect to have that road back soon, Tom?
He's already in possession.
Are you, are you, Tom, are you okay with us requiring that the business?
Yeah, the sand uses and all that, they maintain the whole works, it don't bother me, and I use it even for myself.
Yeah, but point does.
That is the sixth condition.
Question, comment?
But it's certainly, I mean, traffic, I mean, that's what we're on, I don't mean that.
Mark has, Jane.
Ah, Mark.
I had a question for Tom there. You gotta look ahead five years. The sand mine is done, it's totally kaput, but its truck business is still there. So you're gonna keep that road open, plowed, maintained for the?
You need to, because that road, actually, all that road is, is in there, I can allow anybody I want or not, vice versa, in there. I can, actually, in the way it was written by my grandfather, Dan. I have no problem if somebody wants to use it.
Mr.?
I'll answer your question. Don.
So that parallel drive, whatever you want to call it, that's there by handshake rather than a formal leasement?
Yeah, they, they spent the money, put it in, I have no money expense in that period. I have nothing, nothing in that, nothing else.
I, I'll make a motion that we, we change, uh, the red will to will not.
Is there a second to Don's motion?
I would second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we will change will to will not in the condition, findings of fact, number one.
Correct.
Stephanie.
Is there a revision to the language of the finding to support that?
Uh, yes, that we view that it will only increase traffic incrementally, not excessively.
Increase the traffic to be incremental rather than excessive.
I missed that.
That's just what you said.
If at all.
It's not my problem, that's.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to change will to will not, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
Okay, it has been approved to change will to will not, create an excessive burden on streets and roads. All right, number two. Any questions, comments?
Well, I mean, I think this is the, kind of the crux of what we're all struggling with, and I, we can leave that as will not, and if we find a condition, or if we can figure out a condition that makes us all satisfied, you know, then I'm okay with that.
Is that agreeable with people? We go, we go to the conditions and try and.
We don't have to do that right?
Resolve it?
Yeah, we don't have to do that right this minute, but that would be my.
When we get to the conditions, we can resolve it there.
Yes.
Okay. Number three is got will in it. Do we want to leave that, or do we want to discuss that, or?
I don't think you have a choice, you have to leave it in there, because I don't care if he leaves ten trucks or twenty trucks there, or seven tenths of an acre, it is still going to adversely affect.
All right.
Correct? I mean, we can limit it.
Right, but we don't have to agree to all of these to approve it. We're all under that understanding. All right, um, anything on four? Five? Six? Seven? I think we already discussed that one, didn't we?
Well, sort of.
We've addressed seven.
It says late in the.
So we're gonna change will to will not on seven? That would be my motion.
Why not just eliminate it?
Why, why, it's been suggested that we just eliminate it.
Oh, eliminate, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not hearing well.
No, I think we have to keep it in, because it's.
You can't eliminate it, okay.
Can't eliminate it. It's one of the ten conditions.
You care?
You can eliminate conditions.
Stephanie, you could have.
I'm following my water zoning order, that's all, as we have to respond.
Well, then I suggest we make it to will not.
Yeah, I move it away, change it to will not.
It's virtually the same as number one.
I mean, it's not going to cause congestion, we know, we, we just said that in number one.
Not exactly fit, Fifth Avenue, New York.
Right.
All in favor?
If it does to somebody, they probably should turn in the.
Do we, do we have a second?
I don't, I don't know that we know that, I mean.
There's a second here, right?
There are motions.
There's a second, yeah.
Motion, two seconds.
And I'm discussing.
All right, you discuss then.
Um, I'm, I'm really not sure that we know what the traffic is going to be. Um, there was an estimate, some days it's one, some days it's five or six, and that's in addition, let me finish, please, and that's in addition to the, um, the, whatever the traffic that day is from the sand mine. So I don't think we, we know at all that it will not cause, and the wording is, the business proposed may cause traffic hazards or congestion due to the slight increase of traffic. We don't know what that increase is gonna be, so I think it's perfectly reasonable to leave it here.
Well, you know.
Could I?
We just got done saying that this is not Fifth Avenue in New York, so I guess.
Well, you know, I, I guess I see the point in that we're gonna address it with a condition that says we're asking that trucks going out to use that other side road, so.
Can we vote on it?
Not congestion, maybe a hazard.
Can we vote on this?
Can we vote on that, Stephanie?
Changing it from will to will not?
It's a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Harley made the motion, and I seconded it.
Does somebody want to call a question, or you want to keep talking?
We just have to ask if there's any further discussion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those.
Well, okay, no, the one thing I'll say is I do see it as sort of a justification then for condition six. That's my, that's my only thing. I'm not hung up on this.
All right. All those in favor of changing in seven, findings of fact, the use will to will not, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
Okay, it has passed, and it will not. Will not has passed, I guess, is how I should have said that. All right, now, do we have more?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I also want the language that any increase would not be significant in the finding as well.
You have to change the findings.
It would support the.
Yeah. Oh, okay, okay, so.
It's a slight increase. You said it was the same as number one, I'm assuming you want that to read that.
Yeah, all right. All right.
The, the, uh, finding of fact does go on to say it may cause traffic, and we've judged that it's only incremental, so it's not appropriate to say it will cause hazard and congestion.
No, there's some, no, there's some.
There's, so we've got through the findings of fact now, right?
Yep.
Good. All right, now let's go to the following conditions. Does anyone have any changes? Do you want to talk about anything? Chris, do you want to talk about six?
Well, no, okay, so.
Go ahead.
Well, let's start at the top, go down.
All right.
What is, what does nine point seven say? Chapter nine point seven.
Oh, you're starting with number two then?
I did notice that, yeah.
Start from the top down, I suggested.
So would that be one?
Oh, well, that's always in there. I have no, you know, we have consensus on one, right?
Okay, what's nine seven, Steph?
Nine seven is access driveways, so since this is a private drive, we do have some driveway access minimums. Basically, it calls for no steeper than twelve percent, um, at least thirteen and a half feet of vertical clearance shall be provided on driveways, because it's private now too, um, shall have, um, unobstructed width of not less than twelve feet, covered in hardback material for the entire length of the driveway, but within one hundred and fifty feet of dwelling, in this case, in this language, is road for placement of dwelling, and there should be adequate turnarounds, um, basically clearances, and I think if you look at that, you, you, it goes on to say in this condition that furthermore, applicants identify proposed route configurations for arrival and departure with anticipated loading obligations. Why you have that conditional use permit from 2013 is that you got a conditional use permit, I believe, Tom, Roecamp may be obligated by some federal mine and safety inspections too, there might be some clearances, or there's some other things, but I, I'm looking for a plan, if this is approved, that addresses both, you know, both, I think, the, the conditional use permits that there, that's there, as well as the one that you're contemplating, and I just want to make sure of the conflicting issues with either or, that's what I guess I'd be looking for in staff.
Harley.
So what you're saying, Eric, is furthermore, the applicants identify proposed route configurations for arrival and departure, so there need to be a sign there?
What kind of sign?
To, to tell that where they're, to go on that service road, like Tom was saying, he, he tries to tell everybody that, but.
I think there should be a caution one that is, as was recommended, that there should be one that's placed along that private drive, that there could be cautions ahead by trucks entering, basically trucks leaving if you're entering into that.
So that would be a county, county sign?
Well, there's standard uniform signs, but the cost, I don't, that should be, be picked up, I would think, by the applicant.
But in the county, you need to go through the county to do it, but they will charge the applicant.
The county department could ensure that they have done that for us, other requests.
And shouldn't there possibly be a sign on the, the other road when the trucks are going out to, they need to exit right to that service road?
Yes.
I think there already is signage on.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Just to wait, just wait now. Mr. Roecamp, would you care to address, is there a sign there already?
There is a sign there already, saying all traffic leaving from the mine, from the, from the premises, paths that exit right down the driveway.
Trucks in.
Exit right. Trucks, trucks.
But we're, so, but, but we're dealing.
We can, we can, you know, it, a sign is a sign, it's very easy to put up anything you want to say, but they are being told already, but it's for the mine. It can be transferred to anybody else that's going out. I mean, it says all trucks.
I, I think Eric is talking about access to the business itself, your signage, we don't want to direct the traffic through your mine in, in that loop, I mean, this is a different, this is, they're going to a different place, they're going to his business, not to your mine.
It's all trucks.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to.
Anybody that gets the end of the driveway, they, the sign says all trucks.
He's saying turnaround, he's saying turnaround space at the business.
Yeah, he's talking right by the building, Tom.
Or right by the building. If you want a sign down there, that's not a problem.
Uh, Chris? Kelly, I'm sorry.
No problem. I, I, my, what I interpreted Eric as saying is that they're gonna have to figure it out, what signage they need, based upon mine safety, um, MSHA rules, and, you know, Department of Transportation rules, et cetera, and if they don't figure it out, and something, you know, untoward should happen, it's probably going to be the property owner that's liable for anything that may happen, is that?
I don't think so, I mean, just from the tight quarters, just videotaping that, there seems to be some blind sites, as yours kind of, over and around the office or.
Right.
The building where the, the work would be done, and, you know, the, you know, obviously if you get cleaned up, and, and they need to have, I think, a clear designated flow of traffic, so you don't have surprises by somebody that, you know, that's familiar with that setting, if they're gonna be coming in with a decent equipment or something.
Right, so it's really not up to us to tell them what kind of signage they need? We don't have the, the knowledge of the various regulations, it's up to them to figure it out.
The condition is that they have to comply with nine point seven.
Exactly, and, and if they don't, it's, it's kind of their problem.
Don.
Doesn't Gath G Drive already conform to nine point seven? So isn't this condition two pertaining just to the parcel?
No.
And not to the intersection?
It's pertaining to the mine.
It's remaining, I think, from the county road to.
Well, from the county road, yes. Well, I, I don't think that's, that's expressed here.
So, yeah, I don't think we need to add to this one?
Well, I think originally, we, we just asked the question what nine point seven was, right?
Right, and Gath G Drive, whatever it is, meets nine point seven already.
All right. Everybody clear on that?
So it seems to me that this paragraph pertains just to the parcel.
But, you know, I guess roads do break down, they do deteriorate, so it does have to be kept, kept up, and there is maintenance associated.
Under nine point seven.
Yes, to make sure that it's absolutely hard pack nature, especially if the demand is for heavier equipment or heavier vehicles that are too light, so there is, could be an issue if it was neglected or not maintained.
What is staff going to expect to the intersection, Gath G Drive and County Road, when, when they're reviewing number two here?
The road that's suitable with, um, vertical clearance and hardback material, and basically churning radiuses for vehicles coming and going from that property.
At the parcel.
County road.
Are you trying to control what's going on at the intersection? I don't think that's expressed here, if that's where you want to be.
I think in the scope of the application that's received, that it is suitable from public thoroughfare to the application property and the road. I think in the scope of the application that's received, that it is suitable from Republic Thoroughfare to the application property and the road is part of that. So yes, I mean, you can, as I mentioned, if the road is not suitable for that, and there was other issues, unaffected neighbors, and other users or enjoyment of that property, I think it is effective or ineffective.
And we're not talking about the parcel, we're talking about the use. No, we're talking about the use of the land. That's what a CUP, um, regulates. And, you know, the use of the land includes the use of the roads that get you to the, the conditional use that we are talking about.
So would staff expect more at the intersection than is already required to the mine?
Not if it's present condition, no.
That could be a matter of the record, I think, if we have that.
Seems like we're struggling an awful lot and we haven't got to the hard part.
Ah, amen.
So Eugene.
Richard.
Would it be okay if I ask these responsible gentlemen and, and all of them, what is the traffic flow down there? Would you have 50 cars a day? Would you have 100 cars a day? I'm talking 24 hours. It looks like it's remote.
At this time, Mondays, Wednesdays and Thursdays are my busy days. Not so much on Tuesday and Friday. I probably get 40 trucks in, well, truck trips, let's see, not just one truck. Well, we could say one truck doing 40 loads.
Yep.
Okay.
A day?
So that's.
On Mondays.
Monday, Wednesday.
Thursday.
Monday is the busiest. Tuesday, once in a while, Wednesday, probably 15 to 20 trucks. Thursday, back to 30, 40.
So we're doing trucks. So if you consider each loop, you multiply it by two because they go through the stop sign twice, they, they have to come in and go out. You got 80 trucks. You got 80, 80 incursions with 113, ingress, egress. So that's during.
I'm permitted.
That's, that's a long day.
I'm permitted up to 120 a day.
So how many, how much other traffic is there is what I'm getting at?
What Randy is going to, what, what's going to be coming to him is very minimal. You're, 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 you're talking about one truck every.
I'm thinking.
Six hours?
I'm thinking bigger than truck. Would there be another 50 cars a day in and out of there?
For what?
Well, just going in and out of the dang road.
Why?
It's a popular matter, Tom.
It's a dead end road.
I'm more likely to get run over by a deer on my farm than you are there. I, to, to me, it's.
You know, we got deer out there and nobody's hit one yet.
The traffic, the traffic that's Randy's.
Is nothing. Basically nothing.
That really isn't even an issue.
It shouldn't be.
We're kind of stuck.
Because I'm the one that creates the most traffic on the road.
It's your fault.
I'm the one that takes care of the roads.
You know, we're wasting a lot of time talking about this traffic.
Vince, Vince, Vince.
We're not going to address the mine, okay, it's permitted. It's only trips, so I think we're done. Let's not talk about the mine anymore.
Yeah, please.
It's not part of this petition. And we're talking about.
You were asking about traffic.
I asked about traffic and I think that's important because we're laboring a lot of time, like we're on Fifth Avenue, New York, and we're out in Podunk. Like I said, you're more likely to get run over by a deer than you are another vehicle.
But it's a one man repair oper, you don't have hired help, do you, no? Okay. I understand, yeah, and you know as well as I do, it's a lightly traveled road, but I think sooner or later, we should talk about number four.
But I'm still wondering what staff is going to expect of number two. We, we already know arrival and departures via Gath, Gathkey Road or Drive, whatever it is.
Well, staff wrote number two, so why don't we just let them have it the way it is?
Pardon?
Staff wrote number two, right? We didn't write it.
Right.
Let's just let them have it the way they have it.
We'd be looking for a site plan, kind of like what we have, but we'd probably want it amended to include. Get the one plan here. Yeah, this, I think, well, just this picture is good because you can see now, we have, we got structures. We want to probably know more that, okay, this, this has to be kept clear to serve the dwelling. This has to be kept clear. I mean, is the, the oncoming traffic going to come in this way or is it going to be circulated this way to face out? We're going to want to know that a mine entrance where that, I guess that was more in the video, that shows where that gate was in the office area, to know that that's clear, that's completely functionable and it meets certain federal codes that Tom Rowkamp might be inspected for. I guess we're just making, trying to get something on paper that shows that it's not going to be bottlenecked.
Are you asking us to develop all that?
No, no.
No, I'm, that's, that's what I'm looking for because it's in that language that says two.
Are you, are you, are you satisfied with the way number two reads?
Yes.
Okay.
He wrote it?
Go to three.
All right, let's go to four. Don, you had something for three?
Yeah, what's nine point eight of the ordinance, please?
Off street parking requires.
They have a parking lot there, just parking. Good enough.
Just the general quick statement, please.
They've indicated parking on the site plan, so if we are going to have X amount of semi trucks that's parked by the coal applicants and misfits, we want to know the count and where that area is designated to make sure that the, the described area is large enough to accommodate that.
The, the map we have at present says parking, but I hear that that's going to be trailer parking and not customer parking or, you know, for either business, so.
Is that something staff can work out if we just leave the language the way it is? I mean, can you just require that?
Yes, that, that was.
I just didn't know what nine.
A condition before.
Okay, so.
I didn't know what nine eight was.
Okay, so then can we move, just leave it the way it is and move on to number four?
Is that agreeable?
Yes.
All right. All right, let's go to four.
Eugene?
Uh, Chris.
So, just as a starting.
Or should I call you Kelly?
Yeah, you can, either.
Even it up.
We both answered the either.
Even it up.
Okay, just as a sort of a starting point, after we got to hear what the definition was of.
Salvage yard.
Not the salvage yard too, but also the. Yeah, vehicle that doesn't work, whatever, whatever that was, okay.
Disturb this pen.
So maybe it would be possible for us to just reference that here, right? Because if it isn't a salvage yard, it can't have the things that we heard in that definition, which means there can't be more than three semi trucks there.
Tractors.
Yeah, the tractor part, thank you for that. The tractors there being used for parts.
So does that mean, does that mean unlimited trailers? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not, I'm just starting, I'm just as a starting point, if we reference the existing zoning, that would solve part of the problem.
This, this is already an ordinance.
It is.
I mean, legally, I, I, can I speak?
No, go ahead, please, yes.
I would have a problem knowing that he's already breaking the rules as far as salvage yards. You're limited to three unoperating tractors. Trailers is another story for another day, or we can limit them, but tractors, the semi parts, you're limited to three vehicles that don't move. Unlicensed, well, he read the, the thing. Now, I don't know how we can okay this, knowing that he is over that already.
Well, we're giving him a year or whatever we give him to address that.
We are giving him a year. We are giving him a set of time to consolidate his trailers and to get rid of some of his things, but we can't possibly give him a permit against the ordinance that we're not even applying for. We're not here to talk about a salvage yard and yet we know that he has one and you want to give him a permit for something that allows, it gives him a, you know what I mean? It's, we're not, we're not in the right place here, is what I'm trying to say. So we need to take care of, fix the problem before we can even give him the permit, that part of the problem. The trailers, to get that down, that's another, um, that we can give him time with because that's not, that's not an ordinance already. See, he's already breaking the law, is what it amounts to, and we can't give him a pass on breaking the law for a year.
Semi trailers are oftentimes used for.
Absolutely, we're not talking trailers, we're not talking trailers, we're talking about the tractors.
Tractors.
He read the thing, it's three unoperable tractors, cars, pickups, farm tractors or, well, I don't know about that, but. Three is what you're allowed to. Any more than that and you have to have a salvage permit. And A, he's not applying for one, B, we're not here for that discussion, but how do you give him a permit for part of it when you know he's already breaking the law? That's my question. Please, someone.
He's, he's going to come into conformance with the law. We're expecting that of him.
Otherwise he'd lose his CUP.
Otherwise he, yeah.
He doesn't have a CUP.
He doesn't even have a CUP.
If we issue one, he's got a year to do it. I mean, none of us want to take him away from his.
No, I understand that, that's, that's a whole nother story. I have no problem with that at all, that's a good thing.
Well.
But we're, we're sitting here.
Do you want to add the condition that he conforms with the salvage yard?
Let me ask legal, how do you handle it? When, when, when this isn't even part of what he's asking for?
He doesn't have a permit to operate a salvage yard.
Right. So what do we do?
Just put a condition in acknowledging he does not have a permit to operate a salvage yard and the, and the definition is an ordinance.
And. Yeah, go ahead. By that token, that makes perfect sense, I think. There's to be no salvage yard there. What happened at Bakinaway shouldn't be replicated elsewhere, you know, that would be irresponsible. Does that make sense to everybody?
It does, but how many places out in the country have got six or a dozen vehicles sitting out there already?
We're only talking about this one. I mean, you may well be right.
That's who we had last, last meeting we had 10 years ago. Greg and Jeff and everyone says, well, there's, I want you to please everybody that's, I know several places got six, eight vehicles out there that's not licensed and sitting right along the road. Highway six out there was that farm there. Ryman's, they've got a whole yard full of trucks and equipment out there and everybody drives by every day. I'm, it's not fixed right for me, but there he is, out there everywhere.
And they shouldn't be.
They shouldn't be.
The problem is you're applying for a permit.
Yes, I understand. But a salvage permit.
Right, right.
These are parts trucks that are used in.
I under, I understand that, don't get me wrong. Need parts from them. I'll need parts from them one day myself, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Um, just, I can tell you that regarding the inoperable vehicles in the zoning ordinance, the timeline is three months. So perhaps it, because it does say no more than three inoperable vehicles shall be allowed on any one property for a period not to exceed three months. So that would give them some time to potentially address those issues.
Can you hide them in the sand mine?
Mr. Chair.
Don.
I, I, I do think that for, uh, observation, the six corners of the seven tenths of an acre need to be monumented with a corner post. So that we, you know, people that will have concerns in the future have some reference points. Just a treated post.
Well, that's good, but that doesn't really get us there.
Bill, or Richard.
Outside.
I just want to, I just want to editorialize a bit. It's a terrible situation this man's in. If we were in the situation, we would come and we'd ask somebody to help us out. I think that we had a very good approach to this earlier. If we don't want to, uh, get hung up on just one single component of this mess, okay? Which is the application, in my mind. This man thought that it was commercially authorized place to bring his stuff in this emergency he's in. I personally feel that we need to use some reason. You know, you could say, you can't spit in the street, so you go to jail for it. You know, I, I don't know, there's all kinds of rules in the world. But we're here, I believe, not to paint the, 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 the white and black lines brighter, but to try to resolve a sad situation that is not going to negatively impact Winona County at large in any meaningful way. Or for that matter, the, the people on Gathkey Road. I mean, if we've got reasonable minds here and we approach it from, how would we like to be treated if the shoe were on the other foot? Would we apply, uh, would we just hide it like everybody else does? In plain sight, I agree with you, well, this gentleman, they're everywhere. Can't we just put this simple little thing to bed to a, a acceptable, reasonable approach? Can't we just agree to agree on this? I think everybody wants it done, I think Eric would like to have the thing done. If, if Eric wants oval convex mirrors on the edges of buildings and posts, so somebody don't run over somebody walking around in this, what's going to be almost a dang ghost town? I'm pretty sure that the, these people are going to put that up.
Uh, Kay.
That's fine.
The number one complaint that comes into the climbing and rail services department relates to rent salvage yards without a license and the proliferation of pumps and pieces of, of dead mowers, parts off of automobiles and so on. And the potential for heavy metal contamination as they sit there year after year. Vehicles that are inoperable don't have current tests in excess of three. I just offer this information because of the definition you read by our assistant county attorney for a salvage yard. We seem to have had that definition and that crop up and we've been told through this testimony that it's going to be worse, not better. I just bring it up because it is the number one complaint and, and consult.
I have a question for staff. What's this timeframe on this application and if we tabled this this evening? Tried to figure out a good solution.
Application was made on September 21st, 2018. Sixty days and roughly put it around November 21st.
Is that, and that's when the county board has to rule on it by?
Right.
Can we, uh, ask for an extension on it?
You can if you, you as the body make a decision, need more information or for a specific reason. That or if the applicant submitted a request to extend it, so there are several options.
I'm wondering if we tabled it and asked the applicant to come back with a solution that the neighbor found suitable, I think then we would have uh, something better to work on.
Yep.
And we really can.
Yeah.
I like it.
Yeah.
As I said, I don't have a problem with doing this business. I have no problem.
Great.
I have a problem with the junkyard.
Yep, yep.
That's what I do.
What Steve says in the interest of economy makes a lot of sense because if the neighbors could agree on it and everyone would give a little bit, it would save the board being here all night discussing your affairs in front of others.
I, I guess I'm.
Do we table this? How do we table this?
Well, if you asked for an extension, is that right, Eric?
Correct in writing.
Yeah, if you would write and ask for an extension and then make a good, good faith effort to make your community happy and equitable, that would.
Kay?
We got Kay.
Um, the, in this intervening theater, at any point, the, the petitioners might consider, uh, an additional CUP application for, um, operation of a salvage yard, which includes screening measures and other things, um, as well as, you know, so as a second CUP. If the status quo is right.
If the interim permit is available, could they do that too?
Don.
Yeah. I don't see any point in tabling it. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm missing your last name, but the, uh, the person that addressed this during the public hearing is not opposed to the business, and it sounds like he's not, he's amenable to the seven tenths of an acre storage area that's been designated.
I don't know that I would say that. I, what we have, we have way too many semi-trailers. There never was semi-trailers back there when I moved there.
Right.
This is all accumulating since the mine got there, since David had moved his stuff from his other farm. It all came back to this house, and you can see by the letters, that used to be a field.
Well, Eric had a, a photo up that had to have been from three years ago or less where there was hardly, there was only a couple, maybe four trailers there. So in the last three years, this ballooned from four to, I think there's three, I think there's thirty-six there now? Is that, did that sound about right? I did drive, well, I drove to the site myself, uh, day before yesterday. I didn't come any closer than to Rooker's driveway, and I could count thirty from there, and I'm guessing that there was some others in between.
And in this interim, he's got to give the rest of that stuff out of there. Where do you think it's going to go?
Well, we know it can't come here.
Well, I, I thought you had a great idea, Steve. Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion that this be tabled.
I don't know how you approve something.
And how, say it again.
Make a motion that we table the, the petition this evening and get at least a thirty-day extension. And we can only ask that the neighbors, uh, bring something forward that they're both agreeable on. And then we can revisit it.
Now, does that have, counsel, does that have to be approved by the commissioners or?
No, we did it by statute, um, for basically as long as we can cite some reason why we're extending the sixty days and you have a deadline, then we're allowed to do that up to our sixty days.
Okay.
Now.
So it's been made and seconded?
Right, and, let's see.
Have to ask for a discussion.
All right, I'm asking for a discussion.
When does the petitioner have to, uh, agree to the extension?
If we extended it beyond the additional sixty days, if my understanding, I remember it from the statute, so we, we, for.
I don't think we can unilaterally extend it unless we have.
As long as we can cite a reason why we're doing it, um, we can extend it up to sixty days. After that, when we meet their approval beyond it.
So we don't need their, we, we can do it unilaterally for sixty days.
We need a, we need a substantial reason for doing it.
The.
It's getting late, that's a substantial reason.
My lights just went out.
If I could.
It's a motion.
Yeah, um.
Richard.
The only thing, I'm wondering, I wonder if I was Randy over here, uh, we don't give him his permit tonight. Is he going to be under some enforcement action if he continues to do what he's doing out of that facility? Or are we going to continue to allow him to do what he's doing however?
Counsel.
Generally, the first step of enforcement action is to try to get someone to apply for an active access permit. So we already were. For enforcement action.
So we got him shut down now already?
No, we don't, we don't shut it down.
No, he'll shut down.
We ask him to get the permit.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Question.
I just.
Mark.
I figured he might want to.
Are you going to ask him to get a junkyard or a salvage yard permit?
I think in between now and the November meeting, there's probably lots of discussions about options. It'll come back at that point with what seems to be the most reasonable.
So I, I think, you know, to come up with the, the reason, um, that we need to table this, you know, the way this is written and, and what we've learned tonight would indicate that we're being asked to, um, approve a CUP for something that would actually be illegal under our own ordinances. We cannot do that as a response. So we want to give the parties a chance to come up with a solution that would, you know, be a legal solution and would be amenable to, um, both parties or however many there are here, and.
We need more information.
Okay. You.
Yeah, Don.
It would not be illegal under our ordinance if we included the condition that the petitioner is aware that he cannot operate a salvage yard business.
Right.
It also wouldn't be illegal for us.
He already is operating one.
It's also not illegal for us to permit a salvage yard, right?
No, not if there's a, a possession.
So, you know, where do we start at?
This isn't a petition for a salvage yard.
No.
It's three, three.
So.
Again.
Discussion or would somebody please call the question?
Again, I see no point in delaying a decision beyond tonight on the CUP. We can treat what we want with conditions.
Okay, you asked for the, call the question, I call the question.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion to.
Call the question.
Call the question.
Yeah.
Call the question, okay. So all those in favor of calling the question, raise your right hand.
Let's see, that's this one.
I believe it's, all those opposed, raise their right hand. It passed that we called the question. Now we can vote on the motion to.
Table.
Table the CUP application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, well, we have one opposed, but quite loud, but I think it passed. Now, Eric, if you remember my discussion with you last week, I win. Unfortunately. I, I.
You would go past ten?
Yes, I told Eric that, uh, we wouldn't get out of here very early. So I appreciate you people staying here this long. I'm sorry we didn't get it resolved, but I think that we did the best we could under the circumstances. So I guess I'm going to leave it to the parties involved and planning commission to try and come up with a resolution of this problem. And will it be on the agenda then next month? Okay, all right. Well, I guess. Um. Or an adjustment update.
Oh, yes. Uh, we, uh, we originally had three on the docket. One of them pulled out, uh, yesterday. Uh, requested, uh, to hold it open. Uh, we, we, we tabled another one and, uh, left it open for next month's meeting. And, um, then we had a relatively simple one, which we were able to approve. So it was a, it was a fun time like here. You know, a little, I don't remember everybody's name.
It's got to be more fun, huh?
All right, then we need a county commissioners.
So our last meeting here, we had, um, worked on interim use permits, and that still isn't for the county board, so. And we didn't have any, we didn't have any CUP, uh, applications or, so that, there's been no activity on what we've done since.
All right.
I, I have a question or commissioner Jacob or whoever, who am I? Um, we heard that it's on the agenda for the next board meeting, the consideration of the IUP.
Not, not this, not, not this Tuesday, the following. You know, I just, I just got my, uh, agenda, which I haven't looked at yet. I just picked it up before this meeting.
And has there been a public hearing regarding that?
That was what the planning.
Yeah, we did that.
But the board has to have a.
They do not have, they are not required to have a public hearing on that. That was under the division of the legislative procedures. The, as being, let's be, the board could choose to be on that night or at night.
What month are we in?
It's on, it's on Tuesdays again.
So is, uh, is somebody at the board level going to argue for a public hearing on that? That you are aware of?
You know, I'm like a deer in a headlights. I just picked up the agenda.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't done, I haven't done my studying on it or anything or.
Fair enough. Do you want to?
Do we, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
Okay, Vince moved to adjourn it, Mark seconded it. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.